Okay, call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you and welcome to our May twenty first council meeting. Uh, just a quick reminder about the microphones. If you speak into the microphones, try to make sure that you, um, speak into the microphone that it's on. And, uh, you're a couple of inches away from the mic. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Windorf.
Here.
Alter, West.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Shalata.
Here.
Zadi. Demus.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Counselors, first order of business, we have approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of May seventh, two thousand nineteen. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
I move to approve those minutes, May seventh.
We do have a motion to approve the minutes from the May seventh meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It's gonna be, uh, take us right to the bid openings. Item number one, the two thousand nineteen concrete replacement phase two project. Um, you have one bidder, um, is Bebernardi Construction. Okay, the bid bond is attached and total bid for the two thousand nineteen concrete replacement phase two project, three hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. Three eighty-five, seven nine zero. This bid will be turned over to Department Two. It's gonna take us to our appointment section of our agenda. And Mister President, Members of the Council, I'd like to submit to you the name of Janissa Meredith, first term. Rebecca Briesmaster, first term. Todd Redman, first term. Chad Banks, first term. Lauren Schoenfeld, first term on the Beautification and Tree Committee, and Counselor Keith West is our council liaison.
Council, we have a great group to begin the beautification committee. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor West.
I'm standing.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mister President, Members of the Council. That's a great group of people to move us forward, uh, for the first meeting. I would, uh, also, Mister President, Members of the Council, submit the name of Erica Koschar, third term, to serve on the Joint Travel and Tourism Board.
Council, we have Erica Koschar, the mayor's nominee for Joint Travel and Tourism Board. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mister President.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mister President, Members of the Council. Uh, it's another year and, uh, our present presentations and proclamations bring us up to, um, our two thousand nineteen, uh, Arbor Day proclamation. Uh, I'd like to read, uh, proclamation and begin planting trees, right? Mark's excited. In eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And the holiday of Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, and produce life-giving oxygen and provide a habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values and hence the economic vitality of our businesses and business areas and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare Saturday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen to be Arbor Day in the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland. And I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. To commemorate Arbor Day, a tree planting will take place on May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen at ten a.m. at the High Desert Arboret- Arbore- Arboretum. That's what it is. And where, where is that, Mark? So out on, on, on the west side of the golf course. Okay. That's good. Let's plant trees. We, um, we have a, a great committee, uh, Beautification and Tree Committee that I think's gonna really do some good work for us, and if we could, um, maybe alleviate some of the people that, um, seem to jump the curb and trash our trees, uh, during the year, that would be helpful. But, um, keep planting trees. Mark, you wanna come up? Bimbo? Okay, this is gonna bring us right into the position section of our agenda. We don't have, uh, anything on the list, but if there's anyone wishing to address the council on any issue, this is your time to do so. Welcome, Mister Wilbert.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Counselors. My name is Ken Wilbert. I am with the Rock Springs Rotary Club. And with me tonight, I have John Nelson and George McJunkin, fellow Rotarians, and I'm here, we're here on behalf of the whole Rotary Club and the citizens of Rock Springs to thank the city for the help you gave in helping us get the flagpole, Adour, and Gateway fixed. As you know, it's been out of commission for the last year because it was leaning. And it took quite an effort to, uh, get that fixed and with this, with the mayor's personal help, along with Paul Kausig and the Parks Department and the Chief of, Chief of, uh, Fire Department and, uh, Chief Patikko. It, um, it really helped us get it going. So, we've got it done. It's, it's ready to have its first flag raised. And I want to formally invite you and formally announce that we're gonna have a rededication ceremony on June fourteenth, nine o'clock. That's a Friday. And we'd like to invite you to come and, uh, participate. Uh, our intention is to fly the forty by eighty-foot flag. That's the first flag that was flown on that pole on September fifteenth, two thousand and one. That's the size of flag that we first flew on that pole. So we're gonna go up with the big flag and hopefully the weather will cooperate and, uh, we can do that. The, uh, Fire Department will raise the flag for us. The American Legion will provide a pillar guard for us, and we have a presentation and, uh, some speakers for us. So, wanted to thank you again, and, and we could not have done that without you. And so, um, we want to present you with the plaque at the, uh, at our ceremony in, in June. So, I want to let you know that your efforts were not overlooked. We do appreciate it. We were kind of floundering there for a little bit for various reasons, but, uh, we got it together now. So we want to thank you. So I'd like to, on behalf of Rotary, we'd like to applaud you.
Well, we sure appreciate all you, you Rotarians do for, uh, the city and, uh, for taking care of our flag down there. It was, uh, it was a great project and, um, very few dollars expended. Some, uh, great, uh, businesses, uh, employees and, and you folks that came together to get it done in what? Three days, maybe? Two, three days?
About that, just about that. We got it painted too. So, that's great, you know. So we painted it and it looks good. So, uh,
Yeah.
We hope to have a little trial run beforehand to make sure everything's working well, but, uh, June fourteenth is, is the day of the formal rededication.
It'll be nice to see that big flag back up there and give it a, give it a test. So thank you for all you do, and we look forward to seeing you on June fourteenth. Five, five p.m.? Nine?
Nine in the morning. A.M. A.M.
I'm close. I might, I would be the only one standing there. Where did they go? We appreciate that. Thanks for coming down and, uh, we look forward to it. Tough crowd. Yeah, okay, with that, Counselors, um, uh, I'd, uh, bring us to the Officer and Staff Reports. The, uh, item number one, the Health Insurance Fund recap for April two thousand nineteen, the Financial Report Summary for April two thousand nineteen. Uh, three, the Rock Springs Renewal Fund Financial Statements for March two thousand nineteen, and four, the Animal Control Monthly Report for April two thousand nineteen. And entertain a motion to approve the Officers and Staff Reports and place on file.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? At the record show, no opposed. And this is gonna bring us to our Council Committee and Board Reports. Item number one, the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board Meeting Minutes of April tenth, two thousand nineteen. And item number two, the two thousand thirteen Special Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board Final Audit Report. Uh, Counselor West, I'll give you some time there if you'd like.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to give you all a quick update on the final audit report for the two thousand thirteen Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board. Uh, the board had our final meeting last Wednesday where the preliminary audit was approved. The final documents have since been issued once they were signed off by the Chairman of the Board. That wasn't able to be distributed in time for your packet. To a notice tonight, you have the preliminary version for your review. Uh, the final audit and compilation of documents have been delivered to the County Clerk to be held for permanent record. And I can easily forward a copy of that to you all, or you can get it from Mister McBurnett as well. I would just like to say thank you to all the board members who volunteered the last six years of their time and dedication to ensure the monies collected were done so properly and distributed accordingly. Allison Volsek essentially served as the clerk for the board and deserves an extra recognition for a job well done. Although I'm partial, I'd also like to recognize my father, Reed West, who served as the Chairman of the Board for the last six years, even after the most ele- the most recent election, to ensure the final wrap-up of the funds was completed smoothly. In my short time on the board, I quickly realized why Councilman Shalata was so quick to dump that final duty on a newcomer. What a complex tax co- collection and distribution process that the average person probably never stops to think about. Just for your information, you might recall that the total amount approved by the voters was just shy of eighty-two million, which included the cost for bonding. What a goo- what a godsend for the individual communities and for the City of Rock Springs especially. I would just like to close with saying God bless the voters, God bless the industry in southwest Wyoming.
Well said, and, uh, I couldn't agree more. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, everyone that, uh, participated, including the voters in, uh, bringing, uh, such great projects to this community and for the work that, um, the board, uh, has done over the years in making sure that, um, uh, transparency and accountability was, um, was, uh, first and foremost. Appreciate that. Counselors, um, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Officers or Council Committee and Board Reports in place.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
Before we do that, I would like to send out a big thank you for all the volunteers that helped pick up trash this past Saturday and for all the businesses that donated all the supplies and the food that we need to thank our volunteers. We had a great turnout despite, it was a little chilly, but if you picked up garbage, you warmed up real quick. So, but I think it was another, unfortunately, a very successful year. If you look at all the orange bags, uh, it mean that we picked up a lot more garbage. So I want to just thank everybody again, uh, whether you picked up Saturday or you picked up prior to that, it all adds up in the end. So thanks again.
Thank you. It was a great turnout. I do have, um, found somebody's cellphone if you lost it. Uh, and, um, one thing I'd like to, uh, maybe add, maybe a little bit of help. There was some items over on the west side of Walmart that, uh, we couldn't pick up, and that included a microwave refrigerator, um, a TV. Um, so maybe I could get with Paul, maybe you, we could get a truck over those items up. That area was quite eye-opening. Uh, but, and I'd say a lot of that doesn't come from our residents, uh, most likely people that visit our community, but, um, what a need. I hope this continues. And, and, uh, every year it just seems like, uh, it's just a shocker of the amount of garbage that's out there. But thank you to everybody. Uh, you guys did a great, great job. Tate, uh, Windorf, um, I s- the Queen, uh, had her crown on. It was, it was just, uh, it was fun. Uh, the council, um, did also, um, um, donate a, uh, uh, pass to the rec facility. So, Dave Lee's gonna take care of that for, um, one of the ticket holders. And, uh, it was a great event. Good day.
Thanks to all the businesses, everybody that attended the luncheon, and there were lots of people. Everybody had won at least one prize.
Yeah.
And we had so many other prizes donated that we put all the tickets back in, and so some people actually ended up winning two prizes, and they were all really nice prizes that were donated by the local businesses. So, thank you very much.
Good de- good deal. Um, um, do I have a motion to approve the Council Committee and Board Reports?
So moved, Your Honor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? At the record show, this is gonna bring us to cor- correspondence. Counselors, if you've had time to look at the correspondence, I'd entertain a motion to approve the correspondence and place on file.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? At the record show, this is gonna bring us on to the Bills and Claims section of our agenda. Counselors, item number one, the Bills and Claims for May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve the Bills and Claims for May twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the Bills and Claims for May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
At the record show, and item number two, the salaries for May seventh, two thousand nine.
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for May seventh, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for May seventh, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Record show, this is gonna bring us to our new business item on our agenda. Item number one, the request from the Finance Department for permission to apply for a limited retail liquor license. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate. We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record show, item number two, the request from the Engineering and Operations Department for permission to bid the Bunning Park Rehabilitation Project Phase Two. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
Do we have a motion to approve this request? We have a second.
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Record show, no opposed. Item number three, the request from the Engineering and Operations Department for permission to fill a vacant water system operator one position in the Water Operations Division. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number four, the request from Square State Brewing to close a portion of South Main Street for a power weightlifting competition on June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, from noon to five p.m. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman, was that Shalata?
Your Honor. Yes. I've moved to approve this request.
We have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second? We do have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Record show, uh, item number four, the request from Square State Brewing for a malt beverage permit for the Kilos and Cakes Event on June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, from noon to five p.m. on South Main Street. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Move to approve resolution five.
Okay, we have, we have a request, uh, we have an approval on request number five. Do we have a second?
Our new business, I'm sorry. It's under new.
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Upstate.
At the record show, item number six, the request from Doug Urick for a malt beverage permit for the Rods and Rails Event on June fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, from nine a.m. to midnight at five forty-three Broadway, which is the old American Legion. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve this request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number seven, the request from the Sweetwater Dirt Racing Alliance for three malt beverage permits for the Sweetwater Speedway Races on May twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, from six p.m. to midnight at the Sweetwater Speedway. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Upstate.
Record show, this is gonna bring us to the Resolution section of our agenda. Counselors, um, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six-seven, we've, uh, had no word from, uh, the events complex at this time. So I would, um, recommend unless the council wishes to do differently, for Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six-seven to remain table till the next meeting.
Your Honor, I will follow.
Appreciate that. We have a motion to, uh, have two thousand nineteen six-seven remain tabled.
So moved.
We do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Uh, item number two, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six-nine.
A resolution accepting and approving a proposal from McGee, Hearn, and Pye's LLP Certified Public Accountants and Consultants to audit the financial records of the City of Rock Springs for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute and confirm said proposal on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your ple- pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash sixty-nine.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash six-nine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number three, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven zero.
A resolution accepting and approving a property disposition service agreement with propertyroom.com Inc. and authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash seven zero.
We have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven zero. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number four, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven one.
A resolution accepting and approving an agreement for engineering service with Forsgren Associates, Inc. in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and seven, seventy-five dollars, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve twenty nineteen seventy-one.
We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen seven one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number five, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven two.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Richard W. Beckwith as City Attorney for the Si- City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute certifications related to the fiscal year twenty eighteen Edward Byrne Jague Justice Assistance Grant on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash seventy-two.
We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash seven two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Windorf.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number six, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven three.
A resolution accepting and approving bids for the sale of surplus city property and authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to accept bids on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash seven three.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash seven three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes, just one note on this, um, and I appreciate everybody pulling together and tried to, uh, to, uh, uh, get some of this, um, old, um, equipment and materials out, but some items were not bid on and remain, uh, left over, you might say. Uh, so, I've directed the, um, city staff to, um, put out, uh, uh, some information on social media, the website, uh, pertaining to some of the furniture that might be left over that may be useful to those. over, that may be useful to those individuals, uh, clubs, uh, groups, whatever that may be, to give them a chance to, um, use some of these items prior to, um, hauling it off to the land. So we will do that. With that, item number seven, two thousand nineteen dash seven four.
A resolution accepting and approving an administrative services agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Wyoming, and authorizing to dr- and directing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city when it is received.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash seventy-four.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven four. Is there a second?
Second.
We do have a second. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. And item number eight, resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven five.
A resolution accepting and approving a security camera services contract with LR Communications, Inc., doing business as LR Computer Services for the placement and maintenance of security cameras within the city, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the City of Rock Springs to execute said contract on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash seventy-five.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven five.